They're calling the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Please stand for the official leeches.
This is a request to the United States of America. To do a vote on which education, what we need to do, because we will be in this tomorrow.
Well, Matt, up there.
Here.
Dean Pepper?
Here.
And Swart?
Here.
And Kaminsky?
Here.
Michelle Kaiser?
Here.
Aaron Novak?
Here.
John Pepper?
Here.
Thank you. And now you all have your host and party people for orders. Can we just hold your lap together? Let's get them. Now I'm going to ask for nominations from the floor for President of the Board of Education. Do you have a nomination for board president?
I nominate that.
Okay.
Can I have a second? Are there any other nominations for President of the Board? Here the nominations are closed and I'd like to have a vote on a favor. I approve his president. I think he will. Thank you. No polls, seven zero. Congratulations to Mr. President.
Thank you.
And now we can go to the other here. Oh, wait, you should do.
You want to go on the next question? I have an nomination for the floor for Vice President. Nomination please. I nominate Michelle Harris. Have a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Aaron's second. Who was first?
Mike can validate it. All a favor?
Aye.
Almost. Any more nominations from the floor? Michelle? Congratulations.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent Schools of the Greenwood Lake Union Free School District
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent Schools of the Greenwood Lake Union Free School District according to best of my ability.
I appoint three board members to the Board Audit Committee. Who would like to be the three for Audit Committee? John? Michelle? Third? Dave Salt. Appoint three board members to the Facilities Committee. John? Aaron? And myself. My three board members to the Budget Committee. Aaron? More? Anyone else?
I have a question. I'll call all meetings on through.
I'll sign the budget committee. Change up.
And your third?
We are. At least seven.
All right, I'll do it. Appoint three board members to the Policy Committee.
Who would like to be in Policy?
Mike? Michelle?
When do you guys meet for that? Daytime?
We do need to delay the day usually. We try to work around a very scheduled asking in the morning. It's like eight, eight thirty.
And and it didn't be monthly because we were doing the policy book. We now have the policy book and then it will be quarterly. And that's not that we could also do on on.
Yes.
Dave Salt. Appoint board member liaisons to the Chester and Lower School Board. I need you to do all the events.
Yeah.
Anybody else like to do testing? Appoint board members to Axwell. We need a member and a second. Mike? Anyone else?
And. Listen, you have to have a rock. He's going to.
Appoint members for Disba, voting delegate, and all. Who would like to do that?
That's your party.
Michelle? And Mike will be in Policy. Appoint board members to Disba Legislative Liaison and all. All right, we're on to consent agenda. Ask for the item list of votes. Consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are approved via one single vote unless they are removed from being a consent item prior to the vote. I have a motion for the whole consent. Aaron? Second. Any discussion? All a favor? I have opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next one?
Just send the time.
All right. Now on to the business meeting. Call it a business meeting with order at six ten. Review and approve the board agenda. The Board of Education has reviewed, approves the agenda as presented and/or amended. Can I get a motion, please? Adding, second. Michelle? Any discussion? All a favor? Opposed. Paris seven zero. Review and approve approval of board agenda. Notification after review approves the agenda and present and/or amended. Did I just do that? Sorry. And business meeting. In motion to accept the minutes of the June thirteenth business meeting as presented. Motion is gone. Second adding, any discussion? All a favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes for the special business meeting held on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two? Have a motion please. Aye. Second. Michelle? Any discussion? All a favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. June twenty-eight, twenty-two special meeting. In motion to accept the minutes of the June twenty-eighth special business meeting as presented. Motion please. Down, second. Any discussion? All a favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Zero. The instance presentations.
In July fifth.
Oh, July, I'm sorry. I get a motion to accept the minutes for July fifth, twenty twenty-two special business meeting as presented. Motion please. Mike, second. Adding, any discussion? All a favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Good evening, Greenwood Lake Board of Education members and Greenwood Lake community. This summer, we have a lot of different projects going on around the school district. The French drains are being installed around the basement of the elementary school to help alleviate the water issues that we have, particularly when it rains. They you'll see that they have gone through the faculty lounge, through the closet of the faculty lounge. This is the tech office slash storage space, and this is the book room. They are quite deep when you walk up there. They are about three feet deep. So they've been doing lots of digging and taking out of the dirt. The next step would be to lay the pipes in. That is ongoing and is on schedule. The elementary school cafeteria project is ongoing this summer. I am very pleased to say that demolition is now one hundred percent done. You can see now, I was down in the space this morning, and you can see all the way through to what was the food pantry in the back. So the this wall between the cafeteria and the kitchen is gone. The half wall that was there that stuck out a little bit is gone. Flooring is removed and the walls have been removed. There are two found conditions that will require change orders. One is the condition of the walls. So you can see here, and you can see that it goes all the way around the entire room, that there is has been some significant water damage over time to the walls of the elementary school. They did think at first that it could be that it was lead paint, and that's why it was looking like that. They did test it. It is definitely not lead paint. It is water damage and the water seeping up from the ground into the walls. So they are discussing moving, taking about two to three feet of wall out all the way around the room and installing some concrete board. We should have the proposal for that. That is what they're thinking right now. We should have finalization of their proposal by tomorrow with some numbers on what that will cost. The second was discovered today. They have found a second full foundation in the cafeteria underneath the current foundation. So you can see in this picture here, they've dug through the foundation and they found another one. So in order to stall the French drains and the pipes for the kitchen area, they are going to have to dig through a second foundation. So that is what is considered a discovered condition, so there will need to be a change order for that. Rather than have it take twice as long, we have requested additional man hours and manpower to try to get it done within the same timeline. So we expect an update on that at our weekly meeting tomorrow as well. Any questions on either of the found conditions? It was quite surprising to all of us, but once they found the second foundation, Rob said it answered a whole lot more, a whole lot of questions that he's had over the years about why the doors were so much shorter down there, why the pipes were so much smaller, et cetera. We now know it's because of the second foundation. They actually put in a second foundation. I'm sorry? No. Well, we think that this it was probably installed to try to alleviate the water problems, is our guess. We don't know, but that's our thought. Completed project, we do have one completed project, or two small ones, I guess, but it's one installer. We had the steps and the patio area outside the library and hallway corridor doors fixed. It is now a very smooth surface. It was stone, it was very uneven and unsafe, and it was crumbling, so they have now completely fixed that area. Also, coming out of the art room and the occupational therapy room, in order to get to the back grass area, there was a small sloped walkway, but then they had a gravel path. And if you're in a wheelchair or need assistance walking, that was going to be very difficult. So we had a concrete path that comes down all the way out and will take you into the grass where you can walk. So we are pleased that both of those projects are completed. Other upcoming summer projects, we have playground equipment to make the playground more inclusive that will be installed by the end of summer. It is in, so we will be installing that in July. We have the resealing and repainting of the parking lots at both buildings. The back lawn of the elementary school, we are not sure if that's going to get done by the beginning of school just because that is the main construction entrance. So that may need to be happened later in the school year over a break, but everything else should be able to be done this summer. Flooring in the transportation department is being replaced, and the digital signs should be replaced. Any questions about any of the summer projects?
Lot is still not getting done.
Lot is getting done.
We had the equipment.
Four. So the playground equipment, we actually anticipated that was going to be installed over spring break.
And it was.
So.
Again, it was. But in summer, so it's not like.
Yes, it's it's here. We just wanted to be able to make sure that playground equipment is installed in a timeline that allows us to teach the students how to use the equipment properly. We do have a lot of community that uses the playground during the summer, and we wouldn't want that new equipment misused during the summer. So we're installing it a little bit later in the summer so that the community has the playground to play on during the summer, but then we can close it just a few weeks before school starts, install the new equipment, and then reopen it at the start of school. Okay. The presentation I have for this evening was worked on by Lena Polshinsky, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, as well as Ann Laro, our Assistant who we're talking for business. And it's a COVID grant money update. The board requested this presentation earlier in the spring, and in discussion with President Buckley, decided that July was the best time to do this presentation. So further ado. This is just an update to COVID grant funding. So the first wave of COVID grant support money came in the form of the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. colloquially we call it CARISA. It was broken into two different areas. One is GEAR, and it's under the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. And the allocation for that was thirty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars. And the other half of the CARISA Act was called ESSER, which is the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. Our allocation for ESSER was four hundred twenty thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. With GEAR, we had thirty-six thousand, just over thirty-six thousand dollars. It was our plan was approved by the State Education Department in September of two thousand twenty-one, and the funds must be spent by September of two thousand twenty-three. The only activity that was allowed for that money to be spent on was to improve the technology or infrastructure for technology. As we didn't need any infrastructure upgrades, we decided to use that money to purchase Chromebooks to alleviate the money for Chromebooks that needed to come out of the budget. We did purchase one-to-one Chromebooks. We have already spent thirty-three thousand five hundred ninety of that money, and we do plan to use the remaining three thousand three hundred forty-one dollars on Chromebooks this school year. ESSER funds, they are very specific about what the money can be used for. We can't just decide that this is our need. So you'll see on the screen and in front of you in your hard copy that there is a list of items that the ESSER funds are allowed to be spent on. After-school tutoring, summer enrichment, learning loss due to COVID, technology for students. We're already one-to-one with our technology with students, so that's not something we need to really purchase. Planning for long-term closures, which we haven't had in over a year. And a lot of it is starting to become. Update is not the right word. It no longer applies. We no longer would need to use the money for that inspection, filtration, purification, buying supplies. And then there were some other allowable activities, but they don't apply to Greenwood Lake. So the funds for ESSER, like I said earlier, sunset in two thousand twenty-three. So we submitted this SED last year, and it was approved in September of two thousand twenty-one. And this is what we allocated the money for. So we talked about summer support, summer programs, after-school support. And then we, any student that was quarantined, we wanted to make sure that they will be able to catch up when they return to school, so we did some quarantine one-on-one support. We allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars to that. We also purchased an academic assessment and progress monitoring software and tools, and that was forty thousand dollars. We bought LLI kits, which are academic intervention for reading instruction, at sixteen thousand dollars. We planned to hold some parent workshops. We planned to have some hotspots during long-term closures. We needed that a lot in twenty and twenty twenty-one. We didn't need it as much in twenty-one, twenty-two. Cafeteria supplies, except it has to be specific to closures. Additional custodial staff salaries, purchase supplies for sanitization and cleaning of facilities, and facility repairs, which was the inspection of HVAC system. So that's how our plan looked in September of last, well, it's summer of last year when it was submitted and approved in September. To date, we have expensed some of that money. Sixty-seven thousand dollars in after-school support, quarantine support, summer support. We spent about half of the money at progress monitoring. We did buy all the LLI kits. We did have a parent workshop, but it was not very well attended. So we only had the one at one thousand, just over a thousand dollars. We only ended up using about two thousand dollars for the hotspots, fourteen thousand in the cafeteria supplies. We did use seventy-one thousand to have the custodial, additional custodian this past school year. And we did buy some supplies, but we had pre-purchased a lot of supplies during two thousand twenty, and so we ended up using a lot of that up. So we didn't have to buy a lot new. We're unsure exactly what we're going to need to spend this year. We don't know what the goals and requirements are going to be. And then we did use the fifteen thousand dollars for the inspection of the HVAC system. So that leaves us, as you can see, some remaining monies in each of the different areas that we have identified, and it leaves us just over half of the amount of money that was originally allocated to us. So now that we're planning for twenty-two, twenty-three, and we really feel like the state and schools and districts and the nation as a whole is kind of moving out of COVID, we start thinking about, you know, how do we want to use that money now? So when we think about that, we're looking at two hundred eleven thousand eight hundred sixty. So with that money remaining, one of the things, and we've talked about it a lot this school year, is that particularly the students in the elementary school, those that were in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade when COVID hit, really their education was impacted. The board answered that call for support by making sure that we could keep three third-grade classrooms for this coming school year. But we are, have been talking internally, and we do have two RTI teachers down there, but we've been talking about internally about hiring a reading specialist or a primary learning specialist full-time to work specifically with elementary students that really seem to struggle during COVID and came out of COVID needing some extra support. Then we are also looking at potentially hiring a math specialist. That we don't have a full salary for that, we have a partial salary. That could look like part-time over the course of the year. It could look like full-time for the second half of the year. We're not sure exactly what that would look like, but we're thinking that we'd use that for some math support, again, targeted at the elementary school. Still use some of the money for academic assessments and progress monitoring. Still using that, again, with the cleaning supplies, sanitization, using up what we had pre-purchased, keeping that fifteen thousand allocated in case we need it, and then adding in another fifteen thousand for the annual inspection of the HVAC system with us moving to MRF thirteen filters in all of the classrooms and keeping that clean. We want to make sure that we keep that updated and inspected regularly. Questions on the ESSER funding specifically and the proposed changes?
I just have a question. I see it was all approved on nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-one. Were we reimbursed already for all these? Or is that something that we're still waiting?
Ann, can you answer that? Will we reimburse for any of these monies yet?
We received an initial allocation, but we haven't been reimbursed because we haven't filed the request for money. We were waiting for the end of the year.
Okay. Good question.
Does this company get a moving number?
So we'll submit. After this presentation is done, Friday, the end of this week or early next week, we will resubmit. So then we will try and hire the primary learning specialists. We'll probably go ahead and advertise it now. We'll be very specific that it's a one-year grant-funded position. It's not a probationary position. See who buys for that, and then hopefully by the time August comes, our plan will be resubmitted, approved, and we can hire that new person. Hire that new person through using grant money. So the funding timeline, that CARISA, that GEAR, and ESSER funds goes through, like we said, it goes through two thousand twenty-three. So next came in was the ARP, and I think that's the American Response Plan? American Rescue Plan, thank you, Michelle. So that runs from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four. So we did have to submit, oh, we did have to submit an original plan about what we're going to use that money for. Again, there are very specific allowable activities that we can use this money for. We are hoping that there will be some flexibility added over the course of this school year related to this money. So again, it goes to summer learning, addressing COVID learning loss, professional development for custodial staff in terms of how to use the new sanitization and cleaning supplies, buying educational technology, et cetera. The important thing that I always try to impress upon the board when we talk about grants is grant money is temporary, and you don't really want to take too much out of the budget because then if you take it out of the budget and use grant money for it, then it's going to have to go back into the budget at some point. So you really want to try and buy things with grant money that isn't in the budget. That becomes a little bit difficult when we're so restrictive. So we did submit a plan mid-year. It was approved by SED in April. And you'll see, as we look through this, that a lot of it already is out of date. So after-school tutoring, the summer programs, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars. One-to-one Chromebooks, custodial staff salaries, purchasing supplies for sanitization, cleaning of facilities, the HVAC system repair. And then the big ticket item that we had planned to do with this money is replacing the windows in the north wing. And we talked about that at Facilities, and we've talked about that at the full board meeting, that that would be part of an energy efficiency, air efficiency project. So again, we're already thinking about a change, but we are thinking about it. We are thinking about it in terms of changing it over the course of the school year next year for implementation next school year. Because we still have to use that other money before we use this new money. So we are thinking about changing, taking a hundred thousand dollars out of tutoring and summer programs, a hundred fifty thousand from the custodial staff salary, this purchasing of supplies and the facility repairs. So we're thinking of reallocating two hundred ninety thousand of that four hundred ninety-four thousand. So of that two hundred ninety thousand, this is what we're looking at. So the first thing we're looking at is potentially if that primary learning specialist, reading specialist works out well this year, that we could extend them for a year or two grant-funded position, so they could actually be at the elementary school for two full years. Then that math specialist, where it's part-time, potentially part-time this year, do we need that as full-time next year? We're not going to know that until mid-year, and as we see the math and the NWA scores come in, we can do some presentations on that over the course of the school year, but potentially making that full-time. Then again, still purchasing the supplies and doing the annual inspection of the HVAC system in year three. So that ESSER money is for this coming school year, and this would be for the following school year. And then again, keeping the one-to-one Chromebooks and the window replacement. So we do not want to resubmit a new plan at this point because we still have a year to plan on how to spend that. But we will need to resubmit it prior to the end of the school year. So we will revisit this in the upcoming school year, but not change it immediately. Questions?
What if you submit this plan and it's approved, and then say something happens with the HVAC system and we need to replace it? Can we resubmit it to some of this money?
You can submit basically change orders, but revisions to the plan as often as you'd like. There is a process to it, so you try and make a good plan.
But we are.
Yes.
Is there a cutoff date or a refactoring of the final submission?
There are cutoff dates, Ann, for final submission?
For spending the money was?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, the September twenty-three and September twenty-four. And then we have, I believe, two months to submit, but everything has to be paid for by the end of September.
ESSER is, ends in two thousand twenty-three. ARP is two thousand twenty-four. Questions, comments, suggestions, thoughts, feedback? As I said, we will continue to really study our data, look at the math data, look at and make revisions accordingly.
If you create together, we can add special... No, just be on the way to the special.
As of right now, that's the plan, because that's where we're seeing the biggest gaps. Over time, if those gaps shift, or if the data shows us something different, we will analyze that within the schools and across the district, and then bring that to the board for review as well. So what I will plan to do is do a math testing presentation, maybe in October or November. We'll have the beginning of the year data in by that point, and we can look at the data coming out of this past school year, going into the new school year, and talk about what we're doing internally as we're flagging that data, and then what the plan is, and we can revisit again in the winter or in the spring.
Oh, I'd like to welcome David Borg. For the next three years, you guys. Congrats. District liaison, Lorik Hattie.
You're in grade top, I know there's summer school coming. What can I know?
I know the graduation was a success. Again, we wish all of our Greenwood Lake graduates from Lorik High School the best, as they're headed out to the future, whether they're going to the workforce or, you know, college or university. Summer school is underway. I do know that grades have been posted, final grades are posted online on the parent portal. Child's grades are there for the marking period, and also the AP tests that they took and region's exams too. Summer, I think around August twentieth is when fall sport tryouts start, something like that. Also, if your child is trying out for a fall sport, I do know that we have to have the physical forms and everything updated in their file, and all the information can be found on the Lorik Valley website.
I have to, I have to schedule the program for, you know, rest starts there next semester.
Everybody's new boards, new presidents, new superintendent, they're all friendly together. So this is a little less chaotic here, obviously. Facilities.
I think Sarah covered everything in her presentation. The one thing that was not brought up was the water solvency, we're waiting for Culligan and the plumber to replace the resin in the tanks, and then hopefully when they replace that and test it again, it can test.
NISBA is, all the conferences are coming up, so I'm sure everyone's got a little contact memory. Maybe some of those conferences, President July. A lot of it, sorry. We hear NISBA emails a lot. All right. Order committee.
I think our math is only one of it, and, you know, I'm not sure if we have a word before. I don't have a word before.
Legend. I'll see. Okay, alright. BTSA, I don't see anybody here in BTSA. Hi, how are you about the village?
I actually put that one thing up a little bit.
Ken, absolutely.
Yes, we're all, I hope you know, and I keep in mind, so. Hi, everybody. So I just wanted you all to be aware that there is a construction project going on from Optimum to the garden center. That will impact traffic for the next five weeks, so I wanted you guys to be aware of that. And the face of our village is changing a little bit, too. In Village Hall, two of our office people are retiring, Pat Kelly and Beth Farrell. They've been here thirty-three years and twenty-four years, they're the ones that we deal with and you have an issue. You call the Village Hall, those are the people you speak to, and they're retiring this week and last week. So, wish them well. And Kathleen Holder is the new village clerk. I'm sorry, I do not know the name of the lady in payroll, other than her first name is Ollie, but I wish them all well. And the last thing, welcome for me, Portman. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Financial reports tomorrow. Can I get a motion to approve the financial reports for June two thousand twenty-two as presented? Motion placed. Second, Aaron. Any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, approved, the pending agreement to superintendent contract. Can I get a motion to approve the pending agreement to superintendent contract as presented? Motion placed. Second, Hattie, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approved summer inter municipal agreement, town of Lorik Police Services. Any motion to approve the summer inter municipal agreement for police services with the town of Lorik as presented? Second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, approved inter municipal agreement with Village of Greenwood Lake. Can I get a motion to approve the inter municipal agreement with Village of Greenwood Lake by police services as presented? Motion placed. Mike, second, John, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I did, and I'm so sorry.
It's just related to Village of Greenwood Lake. I was talking with Chief Iren the other day, and I just want to, anyone in the community, and we're going to be sending something out shortly. The Village of Greenwood Lake is going to be offering the boating safety course to all of our outgoing eighth graders, incoming freshmen. It is going to be free of charge to them. They're going to do it over the course of two evenings over the summer, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. So again, it will be free, open to anybody, and we're going to host it here in district, and they're going to serve pizza to any of the kids that participate. They are looking to make this a yearly thing and partner with the district and potentially come in during the school day from here on forward. We just weren't able to coordinate it this past spring. But Chief Iren, that's an initiative from Chief Iren and the Police Benevolent Association, and we're excited to partner with them on that. So be on the lookout for news. I will send it out on Facebook and via Messenger, and I will send a robo-call out as well in case anybody misses the email.
Approved Rockland Dosis Cooperative Energy Purchasing Services, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. A motion to approve the Rockland Dosis Cooperative Energy Service for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year as presented. Mike, second, Hattie, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, amended, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three student calendar. A motion to amend the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three student calendar as presented. Motion placed. John, second. John, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, authorized superintendent to execute health services agreements. A motion to authorize a superintendent to execute health services agreements as presented. Motion placed. Aaron, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, amended. Add a school lunch prices. A motion to add a school lunch prices as presented. Motion placed. Mike, second, Hattie, any discussion?
I just have a question. I guess my mic's not working. I turned it off and I turned it on, still aren't working. Regarding that, I know the state was paying for school lunches the last couple of years, and now we're reducing it. Is that going to continue or get refunded for that by the state?
So the federal program where they had free meals for all students is no longer applicable for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So we are going back to paid lunches. However, we do still have the free and reduced lunch application, meal applications that are available that are decisions based on household income. So if you believe you're eligible for free or reduced lunch, or if you're struggling to pay the lunch prices, you can fill out that form and...
And we can use it for grant money?
Currently, no. We can use it to provide food supplies during closures only, not during regular school. So...
Big change for people.
Yes, they, and I just want to point out that the requested increase was a twenty-five cent increase to the lunch price. And after discussions with President Buckley, we decided to kind of narrow that a little bit, and that if there is a difference at the end of the school year, that the board would do a transfer to help cover those costs to alleviate the increase to families, and then we'll just try and do smaller increases year to year. This is a ten-cent increase as opposed to the twenty-five cents that was requested. And it's a ten-cent increase also to breakfast.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approved rates, tutoring and substitutes. A motion to approve the substitute rates as presented. Motion placed. Aaron, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Rescind resolution and appointment for physical education teacher, Oscar. A motion to rescind the resolutions on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and appoint Eric Posman as physical education teacher as presented. Motion's gone. Second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Congratulations. Accept resignation. Motion to accept resignation. Aaron Rosabon as presented. Motion placed. John, second, Hattie, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Appoint senior typist Rosabon. A motion to appoint Corinne Rosabon, a twelve-month senior typist as presented. Motion placed. John, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Appoint PT speech therapist, Graff. A motion to appoint Lord Graff as part-time speech therapist as presented. Motion placed. Mike, second, John, any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Appoint register Finn. Can I get a motion to appoint Theresa Finn as registered as presented? Motion. Hattie, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Congratulations, Theresa. Appoint data protection officer, LeFrie. A motion to appoint Susan LeFrie as data protection officer as presented. Motion placed. Michelle, second, Hattie, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appoint substitute school male courier. A motion to appoint Jose Morales as substitute school male courier as presented. Motion placed. John, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Appoint substitute bus driver, Guzman. A motion to approve Josephine Guzman as substitute bus driver as presented. Motion placed. Mike, second, Hattie, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Except consent agenda, a motion to accept the entire consent agenda according to regulation action. Motion placed. Mike, second. John, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Attorney Lieutenant Shore of Pearson, is this...
This is Ryan.
Except recommendations for CPSE, CSE, a motion to accept the CPSE and CSE recommendations as presented. More to that. Hattie, second, Michelle, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero. Enter into executive session upon the approval of the decision. Aaron. You had very exact employment history of a particular person or persons. Can I get a motion to, to enter into session? Aaron, second, Mike, any discussion? All favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second, zero.